You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Okay, welcome. We'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 3, 2020 to order. Just remind everyone that this is a a video meeting with the suspension of in-person rules. Anytime somebody would like to speak, please state your name prior to speaking. Thank you. Item one, to consider and if appropriate, approve the minutes from May 20, 2020. Put those forward in the form of a motion. James Cosgrove.
Ray Dunbar, second.
All right, it's been moved to second and A, discussions, edits, comments, hearing on James Cosgrove. Votes in favor, aye?
Ray Dunbar votes in favor, aye.
Thank you. Item two, to consider and if appropriate, approve the inter-community agreement between the cities and towns of Berlin, Branford, Bristol, Burlington, Hartland, New Britain, Plainville, Plymouth, Prospect, Seymour, Southington, Warren, Washington, and Wilted. And a resolution authorizing the first selectman to enter into the restated inter-community agreement regarding the BRRFOC. It's the Bristol Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee that requires approval by the legislative body. This agreement will replace the current agreement that has been in place since 1985. On the call, we do have Mark Bobbin. Mark is the executive director for the Bristol group. Mark, you, do you want to just go into the agreement in terms of the purpose of this and the benefit to the communities?
Sure, I'd be glad to. So the original agreement was structured so that the communities could issue bonds for the construction of the plant in Bristol, trash-to-energy plant, originally operated by Ogden Martin, later renamed Covanta. And the bonds were paid off in 2013. A new agreement was entered into in 2014. And all of the elements of the original inter-community agreement relate to the agreement with Covanta, the debt service for the bonds, the full faith and credit pledge of the municipalities. All of those provisions are no longer applicable. So the new inter-community agreement is a streamlined version intended to keep the 14 towns together and also establish a mechanism for the policy board, which is a body created under the new contract so that the organization could function as both BRRFOC and what's called the Bristol Facility Policy Board, which receives about $70,000 a year from Covanta as part of the agreement. In addition, each individual municipality receives funding from the share of electrical revenue and also for outreach purposes. And for Branford, those funds amount to somewhere around $24,000 to $25,000 a year through the agreement. And the purpose of keeping the communities together is to provide strength in numbers for any contractual disputes that we may have and also provide a mechanism for advocacy before legislators at the LOB, at state agencies, and also tracking all the records and where waste is going because a number of facilities are being utilized. So the central organization of which I'm the executive director performs those functions. We distribute the reports to the communities and we also do the true-up of the calculations to make sure the communities receive the appropriate distribution of funds from Covanta. And I should mention that on the horizon, we're looking at the eventual closing of the Hartford Trash-to-Energy Facility and a significant reduction in capacity there. So the Northeast generally has a waste-capacity crisis and it will become increasingly difficult for communities that don't have long-term contracts to remain assured that their waste will be managed properly. So I think we have that with the current agreement with Covanta. And the proposed inter-community agreement could go out as far as 2034. There are provisions for communities to withdraw early, earlier if they so choose. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jamie Cosgrove speaking. And I would just like to say I've been actively involved with the Bristol group since taking office in 2013, a member of the executive committee. I certainly see the value to our town as being part of this, this group. As Mark stated, there's the strength in numbers. There's many challenges that we've been, that we are faced with in terms of, you know, recycling and the disposal of our municipal solid waste. We see that there's a number of issues on the horizon. To have this, be part of this group, not only the strength in numbers, but the resources that I have, with Mark being available to each town and providing these services, but we also, we have a stronger voice when we're meeting with the legislature, which many times we met with several legislators over the years. And this is, I think, all of the importance of remaining a group. You know, one of the concerns back in 2012 when they were transitioning from essentially operating committee to a policy board and the contracts were done at that time. Each contract is individually held. Each municipality has an individual contract with the Covanta, which is the facility that handles our municipal solid waste. And I think, you know, myself speaking for the town of Branford, but all the other communities that have been part of this certainly see the value into remaining as a group. So with that, I'll turn it over if there's any questions that Ray may have.
Well, I have, I just have a couple of things to say because my, my whole thing on this is that unfortunately, no one's fault, but you know, I received this information Monday night and been scrambling for two days to do the best I can to get brought up to speed on this. And that's no one, no individual's fault just seem to be the way it is. And I don't like moving fast absent having our town attorney have the opportunity to look at the 1985 agreement to this new streamlined agreement, which may be beautiful, but, but I don't know that. And he can't say that because I have an email today that the first selectman was gracious enough to send me. You know, he, he doesn't seem to be, you know, against anything that's in this agreement, but he did say he has never, he's never read the 1985 agreement. So, so I have an issue with that. And I'll ask my question to you after I finish. The second thing is, is that we have a solid waste commission and, and I'm not going to get into the long debate that apparently took place last night going back and forth. I'm not going to do that. But what I am going to say is I am looking for transparency. I understand that the first selectman understands all this and that's great, but you know, we have a solid waste commission and I think I'd just courtesy. We give them the opportunity to maybe speak with you so they know what's coming down the pike and what they're going to have to deal with. So, so what I'm going to ask you, Mark, if I may, is, and I guess I'll address this to Jamie also in all fairness. Is there a big problem for us to say re-refer just this body for two weeks to give that opportunity for those groups to be involved in any dialogue that they may want to have? And, and I understand that they may not have reached out to you, you know, to ask questions. I'm not sure they were in a position to because like I said, some of this information came out relatively late. And am I correct that the RTM can still do what they have to do next week? And, and then if we have a meeting in a week, Jamie, if you wanted to do it quicker, I don't care. But after they had that opportunity, if they're all on board, I'm good, but, but I have a hard time with not giving them the opportunity. That, that's all. And, and I was just hoping that maybe we can show that, hey, we can work together, we can be a little bit flexible. Let them be a part of it seeing they're, you know, a volunteer group that do a lot of work. And, and I don't think it's going to hurt us at all. Because I don't think it's going to stop the process. I think it still can move forward. And if it is going to stop the process, I would like the gentleman to tell me that. Because I realize now, I just found out that, you know, it ends at the end of June, which again, I like to have a little time to look at stuff. And I've been in contact with representatives at the town hall. They've been very good trying to get stuff for me, but it's kind of hard to do things in, in just two days. And, and this is something that's going to be for 15 years plus. So is it a big problem if we were to do that? I mean, I don't think so, but, but I would like to hear from the two of you.
Go ahead, Jamie.
All right, well, Mark, why don't you just speak quickly? You know, you can respond to the timeline of what's required and I'll just address some of the other comments that were made. But if you want to just first stress the timeline of waiting two weeks and the impact that they may, that may or may not have.
Sure. Well, the goal was to have a new agreement in place prior to the fiscal year audit to make sure that the auditors were comfortable performing the audit for an organization that was still intact. And so we have a requirement for a minimum of five communities to approve the agreement in order for the agreement to be effective. So we have thus far Southington, Prospect, Wilted have approved the agreement, Plymouth also. And New Britain is scheduled the 10th, I believe. So, and, and then the first selectman had advised me about the RTM meeting on the 10th, I believe. So I mean, I'm perfectly willing to meet with RTM or your solid waste commission. You know, as long as there's a general understanding that, you know, this, this is really an agreement about governance and relationships between communities. It's not so much about what happens to trash, how we handle trash, what the prices are and so forth. It's not an agreement for disposal or recycling. It's really, you know, defines a relationship among a group of communities and how they function as a group. Hopefully that answers your question.
And if I may, Jamie Cosgrove, in terms of the review that was done at, you know, had requested the town attorney, because that did come up in a comment last night. So I asked him to take a look at another set of eyes on the basically pretty straightforward agreement that is before us now. He referenced not, you know, reviewing the 85 agreement, which you just heard from the executive director. The 85 agreement is not applicable to the current structure, the governance structure that we have. That's why we're doing a new agreement, a very streamlined, if you were to compare to this. So in terms of having, there would be no purpose, I can see to rational that time to have a legal opinion on a document that no longer is applicable to the town of Branford. So again, I only asked him to review the current one that is before us, really because of comments that were brought up from the RTM members. And I believe yourself that you had emailed to town staff. With as far as the Solid Waste Management Commission, you know, yes, I had spoken to the chairman yesterday. He sent an email regarding, he had questions. The Solid Waste Commission really is not involved. This is, if you look under their purview, they're really, they're making recommendations to this board based on the contracts that deal with our collection and disposal of trash. You know, Mark's saying that this is really a, an agreement of, you know, the governance structure of this, these communities. It's kind of similar to the COG, right? I mean, we have a number of communities that are joined together and operate really in a cooperative way on different things. And this is, this is really something that's been, you know, it has been in place through several administrations going back to 1985. So I did offer to the chairman, who did send, send me an email saying he was still supportive of the remaining in the Bristol group, supportive of it. And I offered to him that, you know, perhaps I would attend a meeting of the Solid Waste Management Commission to, to explain the governance, governance structure. But I don't think either one of us really were looking at it as if there was some other than informational for them, that there's any, it's kind of outside of their purview. You really, you know, look at the structure. But if it's, I mean, if that's what you feel you need in terms of before you can take a vote, then, then if you want to put that in a form of motion, I'll respect it. But again, I, I don't, we're not, for this type of agreement, it's, it's kind of outside of their purview. It is outside of their purview. It's connected in the fact that solid waste, solid waste.
The governance group does negotiate contracts or what have you for the facility or no? I mean, the governance group is doing what as the group? I mean, it went from a 1985, probably large thing, to now this streamlined. So what are the differences?
We are currently in, I believe it was a 20-year contract with two five-year options to extend, correct, Mark? For with our municipal solid waste to Covanta. And that's a separate contract that's held with the town directly with Covanta. So prior to this, moving more from a true operating committee to a policy board, the contract was with, you know, Covanta and the 14 communities as under the umbrella of the operating committee. Now each con, each municipality holds their, their contract directly with Covanta for those services that they provide. So that's already done. We're in an agreement for, you know, a number of years.
If it's not going to mess anything up, I would like to make the motion just to re-refer our part, only our part, until a date after, within two weeks, but after the Solid Waste Commission gets to hear it. And I would like to be there also because I'm still trying to, and I don't want to do it all tonight because I can't. The big difference is between 85 and now and so forth and the changes because it's kind of tough. Like I said, it's, it's only been two days and there's only so much I can absorb on that one subject. We have many other items. So if, if it's not going to mess things up, which I'm kind of hearing it's not, I would like to make the motion just to do that.
So, Mark, if our next meeting is the 17th, and we could actually even call a special meeting if we needed to prior to that, but 17th, do you see that significantly impacting or having any impact on the end-of-the-year audit?
No, not on the audit, no.
And, yeah.
Right. I appreciate that, thank you.
And the other thing is we, you know, I just want to make, you know, one thing that Mark has touched upon. And, you know, this is something that, you know, New England is in a crisis. There is in terms of, you know, dealing with our municipal solid waste as well as our recycling. And, you know, with the, I'm sure if you look in the paper, the articles of what's happening up at the Mira facility. You know, we're, we're fortunate that we are currently in a group and I would not recommend to this town or any other administration to let this agreement lapse and even to put that into jeopardy, so.
No, I concur, but if it's not going to be in jeopardy, then I, I think it just shows a little more prudence and a little more transparency. And maybe there is a question that may come up for the gentleman that no one else have. I don't know, again, it's only been two days.
All right, in the spirit of, you know, honoring your request, I will second that, your motion. I believe it's been moved and seconded. I believe there was, is there a comment by anyone else?
I have a comment, please.
All right.
Too quickly, I know you guys got a full agenda.
Wayne, you know, just make sure you state your name.
Wayne Cook, citizen. Couple of things. One, again, this, two, second selectman Dunbar's point that speaks to the process, I'm not going to belabor that because we went over it last night. But two exceptions that I take with what the first selectman said. One is that you don't need to see the 1985 agreement because this is a streamlined version. Well, that begs the question of what was in the 1985 that you had a streamline? I think it's important to see a reference point of what was taken out and why was it taken out? And why did you streamline it? Because who knows? Those things might have been very important to us or whomever and we wouldn't have a chance to see that. So that on its basis is very important. The other thing is, and I'll make this quick, for the first selectman to say with all respect that, you know, a solid waste contract is not within the purview of the Solid Waste Commission. Well, I'd have to ask kind of rhetorically, well, then what is? I understand it's about governance. I understand it's about, you know, a different thing that traditionally they're involved in in terms of the monetary aspects and, but this is still a legally binding contract. They are the Solid Waste Commission. So for them to say, or for the first selectman to say, well, it doesn't really concern us. Well, then what commission does it concern? And again, it should not be something that the first selectman takes on himself. I won't say it was presumptuous, but I might think it was presumptuous that no one else should see this, including the RTM, and that they're just going to okay it because it's always been okay. And again, it speaks to the form of government that we have here and the way that things happen that have to be looked at more closely.
All right, thank you for your comment. I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications. I hope I, you know, maybe my words were misinterpreted. When I, when I said that you don't need to see the 85, that's not what I, what I said was in response to why didn't the town attorney give an opinion and review and give an opinion on the 85 contract? Because the 85 contract is no longer applicable. So, you know, why would we, that's why I didn't, you know, have a review on that. It doesn't apply. It's not even, those, those things that are in that 85 don't apply. The, the structure, the, the relationships don't apply anymore. So that's, that was what the intent of that statement was. Secondly, in terms of this is a solid waste contract and why it wouldn't go under the purview of the solid waste. To be clear, this is a, an agreement, a governance structure between communities. It's not a, a collection or disposal contract which is under the purview of the Solid Waste Commission. And again, in terms of what I stated with my conversation with the chairman, more than happy to bring it before his commission and have a discussion. However, you asked, well, who is the appropriate bodies to approve this? The appropriate bodies is the Board of Selectmen, which is here now before us tonight, and the RTM, which will be going front of the full body on the 10th, which was heard in committee. So those are the appropriate bodies in their form of government.
No, well, you know, excuse me, but two quick responses to that. One is, again, you said that the present agreement is a streamlined of 1985. That's what you said. So just thinking about it, I said, well, what was streamlined? What was taken out? It wasn't that, just not, you know, applicable anymore. It was that it was streamlined. So that was my concern about that. And as far as the Solid Waste Commission seeing a solid waste contract, well, maybe they don't approve it, but they should sure know about it. They should sure be familiar with what we do with the lion's share of our solid waste and why we're entering into this agreement with other towns. You know, because I think a lot of people that are on that board or commission weren't there in 1985.
Okay.
I won't go on and on, but let's just say for every point you have, I think there's a counterpoint that has to be looked at as well.
Yeah, and, but again, for the, the people who are listening and at home for the record, this is not where, this contract, and again, it is available. It's on, I think you can get it attached to the agenda of the meetings. It is not, doesn't deal, it's not a contract for the disposal of our solid waste, or bulk of our solid waste. This is an agreement that communities will, you know, are banded together, but it doesn't have to deal with the disposal. So when you said the bulk of our solid waste, it doesn't deal with the disposal of one pound of solid waste.
That's really, you know, that's your interpretation. My interpretation is much different. I think it deals directly with the, with the disposal. It might be, no, in all honesty, it might not be related to the nuts and bolts and how it's done and how much it costs, but it's a very key component of our disposal. And I think that's why it warrants, you know, being heard.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
And Mr. Cosgrove, this is Representative Brockett. I just have a request. Is it possible that Mr. Bobbin could be available for the RTM meeting next Wednesday or next week? I thought that his presentation was excellent and I've read the agreement three or four times and learned more tonight than I did last night and from reading it. So if he could be present next week at the RTM meeting, I think that would be tremendously helpful for all the members on the RTM to ask some additional questions.
Yeah, I believe, Mark, you plan on attending. You're available on the 10th?
Correct.
Correct, he will be there as well as, what we'll do is disseminate. He put together a nice overview of what I think Select and Dunbar received that today. We can circulate that to the members as well.
All right, that'd be terrific. And thank you for your presentation, Mr. Bobbin. That was excellent.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, so it's been moved to re-refer, it's been moved and seconded. I vote in favor.
I vote in favor, Ray Dunbar.
Passes unanimously. Mark, thank you for your time. We'll just confirm the dates of those other meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mark.
Okay.
All right. Item three, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from the Information Technology Director to waive the bid and approve a five-year contract with Axon Technology for the police body camera, video cloud. I'm going to read the agenda item and then I'm going to make it a amendment to revise it.
Oh, thanks.
Body camera, video, cloud storage, beginning FY 2020 at $27,180 per year for a total of $135,900. I'm going to revise this to read because this agreement is a, inclusive of it is the purchase of 55 body cameras that are part of this agreement. This agenda, as written here, this item really dealt with the financial overview of the annual service. So it really should be, let's, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from the Information Technology Director to waive the bid and approve a five-year contract with Axon Technology for police body cameras and video cloud storage, beginning 2020, for a total of $181,260. The year one will be $72,540 and years three, four, two, three, four, and five will be $27,180. I put that forward in a form of a motion and then if I can get a second on that and then we'll have a discussion.
Yeah, you have a second, Ray Dunbar, thank you.
All right. Moving to second. I believe, is Deb, Deb Karen is on the line. Deb, if you want to just give an overview of this request, I know we have provided a significant amount of information. The full agreement is in our packet.
Correct, Jamie, thank you. And I apologize that we need to make that correction. I, I thought it was clear. Actually, what I have is a five-year quote. It's not. a contract per se with legality terms. It's really just a five-year subscription for the for the cloud storage, which is something that myself and Chief Mulhern truly believe in, is a direction we need to move. And it's a one-year purchase of the new on-body cameras, the fifty-five cameras. And so at this point, I'm just going to let Chief Mulhern make a few comments as well. And if anybody has, I'm going to mute myself. If anybody has any questions for me afterwards, please just go ahead and direct them.
Chief John Mulhern, thanks, Debbie. Just to give a quick synopsis, I did discuss this a little bit last night at the Administrative Services Committee and I, I believe with several other people. I believe that there was some misunderstanding about it. I received an email today indicating that this was something more than was presented, but just to give you a real quick overview of, of what we're looking at. So the body camera market today in law enforcement, you really only have roughly two to three choices. You have a company called WatchGuard. You have Axon and you have Panasonic. All the other little ones have been bought up or pushed out of the market. So we currently now deploy a system called WatchGuard. WatchGuard has been bought by Motorola. Motorola is the biggest company, an international company. We do our radio business with them. And I can say that every year, watch Motorola has increases, increase, increase, increase. We'll also say it's not a great company to always deal with. So going to cloud storage is something we need to do. We need to do it for many reasons. We need to do it because we don't have to worry about retention and classification of retention. I hit on that last night a little bit. Why we need that? Our hope was to stick with WatchGuard. Debbie and myself, we negotiated with Axon and WatchGuard. WatchGuard, now Motorola, formerly Motorola, provided us a quote in the first year for body cameras and cloud storage. It was roughly forty-three thousand dollars more the first year. And they would not give us pricing past one year. So we know where that would go if they don't want to lock in for cloud storage for years two, three, four, and five. Secondly, they were releasing a new body camera. I believe it's called the V three hundred. Never been tested in the actual police environment, although they've had great evaluation on their side, but I've also lost a thousand dollars in a previous venture with WatchGuard of cameras we had to return because they failed because they went to market too quick. And the other part of that is, you know, they don't want to go past one year. Flip and look at Axon, I negotiated with them. I thought I got a good price. Debbie went back at them, did her thing, got it down even lower. So they're forty-three thousand dollars cheaper the first year. And they will stick with a fixed price for five years for cloud, unlimited cloud. We can put pictures, we can put videos, we can put reports. We can disseminate videos through a secured network among the press, FOI requests, the judicial system. It is a foolproof system. The research will tell you that. Look at all the major cities that have their own research and development divisions within their PDs. Guess what they're wearing? It's a big company. They own the largest share of the market. I think it's a fair price, a fair contract. You know, where we stand now, we have aging body cameras. They're in various stages of age. We pay money to maintain them on a warranty system that WatchGuard is increasing or Motorola now is increasing every single year depending on the age of the, the unit. So basically, it's, it's the way we need, where we need to go for protection of our, our data and redundancy in our data. Right now, that's something that's a concern to Debbie and it's a concern to me. So lastly, I'll leave it with this. When you negotiate these contracts or you go for these type of purchases, it is a, essentially a single system. It's the cloud storage with the backend software, the backend equipment, the docs, the actual cameras, the software suite that you utilize to manipulate and store the data. That's what they call the evidence.com system, which is built in this. It's a single integrated system. And my experience with these contracts are they are part and parcel. They're one piece. It's cloud and equipment. And we would be neglectful if we didn't try to leverage new cameras in, in seeking cloud storage. Our cameras are aging. We get maybe a couple a year with the cards that we put in the rotation. So this was an opportunity to leverage that and push them. And Motorola, they just couldn't meet, meet the pricing. And this is an extremely reliable service and piece of equipment at a, at a lower cost and it's, and it's proven. So as far as the, the contract, I think that this speaks to a sole source type of situation where I can tell you, I've done tests and evaluation and written reports for purchasing before. I gave you our options. We have a company that has already pledged to us forty-three thousand dollars more a year with no promise for the future. And we have a third vendor, which is Panasonic, which their market share is very limited. And you could poll our area and specifically, there's very few that, that deploy that. So I, I support this. I think she did a great job and I could take any other questions if anyone has it.
Hey, I, I don't have any, is there any questions?
I, I don't have any questions. I will say this, I, I looked at it. Obviously, I, I think the chief will agree. This is a big, a big jump for, you know, some of our, our costs as far as storage goes, but, you know, Debbie was very good in what she put together. And, and you got to go to the cloud. And in the past, the vendor that, that the chief wants to go with now, really it was cost prohibitive because that's why a lot of people didn't buy the cameras because the cameras have been good cameras for some time. My main concern with a lot of the emails I've sent in the last couple of days is the fact that we neglected to waive the bid on the cameras. The way it was presented, we were only going to be waiving tonight the bid for the cloud. And we needed to make sure that the cameras were also part of that. They're part of this agreement, part of the five-year, and that was part of what I made comments about today. Because otherwise you would have had to do two different things because it was over the threshold and, and it wasn't being accounted for. By doing what the selectman did tonight, it's now one sweep and you don't have to have a separate meeting to then, you know, waive the bid for the cameras themselves. Because that came up. Because there was, none of the departments had heard anything about the cameras. This was just to clean that aspect of up. So it's all covered. So I, I mean, I think it's a great thing and, you know, running two systems is going to be difficult enough for you, but, but I know you'll be able to handle that.
Well, Chief Mulhern, I, you know, and forgive me, I've, I've attended several meetings. We've had a lot of challenges lately on the police inside, but I do recall very vividly last night, and I don't know if this is the form you're referencing, but the Administrative Services Committee, I clearly discussed the, the cameras. I clearly discussed the same strategy that you negotiate for these items. And I don't recall other meetings in which I discussed it. So in my mind and from what I, I reviewed last night, it was very out in the open that this included the purchase of the equipment. So I, I don't recall, and, and I apologize, I did send you an email, but nowhere do I remember that the cameras were not mentioned, maybe on an agenda item that wasn't specifically listed.
They weren't listed on tonight's item. That, that was the problem. Our agenda did not account for the cameras. It only accounted for the software. We have now, the selectmen's made it so the cameras are accounted for. The original agenda item we had tonight did not speak of the cameras, unfortunately. And to keep it clean, that's why they were added tonight.
Sounds good.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other further questions? All right, hearing on Jamie Cosgrove in favor, I. Ray, you're muted.
All right. Ray Dunbar in favor, I.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Deb.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, item four, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from Dan Gregory, Superintendent WPCF, to waive bid for pump station services and award the con, award the work for pump station control panels and alarm dialers to Controlled Systems of Connecticut, Inc. for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. I believe we do have Dan on the phone.
Yeah, hi, guys. How you doing? Dan Gregory, Bramford, Waste Water. Yeah, I just, I'd like to continue having Control Systems be my go-to guy for control panels for my pump stations. We have about fifty pump stations in town and I'm getting more and more of the standard panel that he sells, which is very reliable. And he also helps us with other issues. When we have pumping, picking problems and so on. We've had a good relationship with him for probably three to four years. And he's, he stands behind his work. And I, I think it would be, it's good for us to standardize and spare parts. And he has looked at all our pump stations, so we kind of know where we're going. And I'd just like to keep him on the, on the shortlist for the next fiscal year if we could.
Yeah, and Jamie Cosgrove speaking. Just to clarify for the record, this current individual does, has been providing our services for some time, but even this past year under a similar agreement, which we have hourly rates, a lot of this work may just be a call-in work or to address, you know, if there's a an issue at a pump station and repair. So I know the Board of Selectmen have previously reviewed it, looked at the rates compared to the market, felt that there was a very competitive, very fair. And so I think it is, you know, partially the reason why we did it a year or two ago was because in aggregate, when you start to at different times, they may have to come out, and this is similar to the next agenda item. You know, it, it may end up exceeding the bid threshold, but to have that flexibility to have somebody on-call and available and have what the no rate is, there's a, there's a operational benefit to that. And quite honestly, I see other communities kind of set up the same arrangement and we'll get into that more on the next item. I will put that forward in a form of a motion for approval.
I'll second it. I did speak with Dan also on this and I know how difficult it is to run all of those pump stations and certainly you want to have consistency in the equipment that you're using. So I think it's a good thing for the town.
All right, so it's moved second. Any further discussion?
Just to have a question, if I may, how much does this amount to on average per year?
It could be up, Dan Gregory, Town, Town of Bramford. That depends on how many pump station panels. Sometimes they can run from six thousand up to nine thousand. Or if he's checking the check valve for us, that could be, or putting in a sump pump for us, that could be like twenty-five hundred. But the problem is, is when I use him throughout the year, because he is multifaceted, that I'm going to go over the bid limit. And, you know, if my bid limit is twelve-five and I, I buy one panel from him and that panel is eleven thousand, and then I go and have him do a put in a sump pump and that's twenty-five hundred. So now you're looking at thirteen-five, which is over the bid limit. And sometimes it doesn't happen in Waste Water where, yeah, it's nice to get everything in a nice little bundle and to go out to bid. But it does, in real life, it doesn't happen that way. Sometimes I got something that blows up in the middle of the night. I got, and if I got spare parts, that's great. We'll get it done. If my guys can't figure it out, this guy will come in and help us out, get us out of a jam. So I kind of use him throughout the year and if I, you know, have money in my new equipment account where I can put in a panel here because a lot of the stations, you know, forget Bramford, nineteen sixty-two is when we started. And I got pump stations that are at that old. I got pump stations when they started the, the convo phase back in the eighties, eighty-six and, and earlier. Those pump stations are still out there. The, the metal's that old, the contact, I mean, the, the panels are that old. So I try to get in there and upgrade them when I can. And with having him in place, it, it makes sense to me and hopefully it makes sense to you guys.
Yeah, and I just would kind of expand on that a little bit to, to the question. You know, each, each, typically each of these projects in itself would run below the bid threshold is, but however, using them throughout the year does then obviously exceed for this particular contract. It would show up that the amount of work given exceeded. If there's a project, however, that is a plan project, for instance, the, the Hemlock station, I think Bradley Avenue too, correct me if I'm wrong, that pump station is being reda, you know, we'll, we'll do a bid spec for that. We have time, there's design work.
Exactly.
It is really more of addressing, more of on the R and M side of it, you know, the repair and maintenance of the, the, the infrastructure. You know, not inclusive. All right. Any other comments? All right, hearing Jamie Cosgrove, I.
Ray Dunbar, I.
All right. Passes to, item five. Yep, you're still on, Dan. Hang on. To consider and if appropriate, approve a request from Dan Gregory, Superintendent WPCF, to waive the bid for construction and excavation services for the WPCF and designate quality associates, associates as the emergency and on-call vendor for fiscal year twenty twenty. So once again, go ahead, Dan. You want to get in there?
Yeah, no, I, I just, yeah, I'm looking, and Fred has been in the same, you know, in the same position as my go-to guys in an emergency situation. And one thing I could say with that, I, I know, Jamie, that you had mentioned of doing an RFP, a request for proposal on, on getting like New Haven does, a qualified vendor that could come out or more of them, you know, than just Freddie. But right now, having Freddie on the line with, because he has guaranteed his rates through an emergency. And then also that I know that when I get him in the middle of the night, he, he, if he's got another project that he's got to do, you know, he puts us first because we're kind of, you know, you know, we have, we have a relationship. We've got prices already set up with him that he can't go over. And he has come to my rescue when I had the, the pipe, the pipe collapse on Alps Road. He was there, you know, really quick and, and experienced. So I would like to kind of keep him onboard until we get an RFP together for going, you know, to find a contractor. And hopefully we'll do it this year because I, I talked to engineering, Jennifer in engineering, and she said that she could assist us with putting together a bid package to, like New Haven does, to go out and get qualified applicants for construction projects in an emergency and in normal times. Because a lot of times, sometimes I have stuff that's small, that public works could help me out with. And then sometimes they get too busy and they can't help us either. So I would like to have somebody that I know, you know, is going to give us a decent price and be there for us. So how, how you'd like to do it, that's up to you guys.
Yeah, so this, again, this, a couple of years ago, I believe, the Board of Selectmen approved this arrangement and really was after we had to respond to a couple of sewer, sewer line breaks where we had to have emergency call-in. Now, when those breaks occur, you're scrambling to get it addressed. And you call in a contractor and have him on-site. We, we and oftentimes that leaves your, yourself open up to, you know, then negotiating or discussing labor and equipment rates after the fact. So basically what we have now is for set rates for on-call as well as emergency. So if, in the event that there's something that needs to be addressed quickly, whether it's an emergency after hours or even maybe a maintenance issue that we don't necessarily have time to draw up a bid spec, go through the entire process of advertising and getting those in. But it wouldn't be a constituent emergency, it'd be during regular hours. We have a set of labor rates. you, we have a set of labor rates as well as, uh, uh, equipment rates that we could then, um, that use. So, uh, um, in what we're looking at, which Dan had referenced, I had talked to, uh, Greater New Haven, uh, wastewater pollution control a couple of years ago. They actually issued an RFP, uh, with, um, you know, for various, uh, uh, size of pipe, depth of pipe, different scenarios, it's, it's all different scenarios. And, um, then brought that forward and had, they have a number of, uh, pre-qualified contractors who are on the list and ready to go. Um, and to, to, so we're looking at that to, on the town for quite honestly, not only wastewater, but also, uh, public works as well. Um, so.
So if I could, um, cause I, I spoke to Dan about that too, because I, you know, obviously had a concern about, you know, we're not going out to bid for these things and there may be someone, there may not be somebody at, you know, does just as good a work at a better price. And when he told me about this RFP that the town was discussing, it sounded like a great idea. Um, but, but do we have a timeline? Cause and, and, and it's not on any one person's, you know, agenda, but we sometimes get caught up where we just keep carrying these on and on and, and, and not because they're trying to hide something or do something, it's just, we just don't get to it. Do we have a timeline? Can we make a commitment that this is going to be done? I, I mean, it just shows that, you know, we, we're trying. I mean, obviously if something happens, it's getting fixed. Dan's going out there, they're doing it. We'll worry about it later because we have to. Um, but is that something that is on the agenda to take place relatively soon?
Um, yes. Again, I don't have, I, I, I can't right now say that the RFP will be issued on this date. But we do have their, uh, the template that was used in the, the other community that I mentioned and, um, uh, but we want to also, um, expand that to incorporate, you know, drainage pipe and on the public work side as well. Would you see the benefit of that? So it will take a little time, but, uh, to put that together, but we hopefully, uh, you know, it'll be this in the coming months.
Okay. No, I, I'm, I'm good with that. I mean, you know, it's just, we're just trying. We showed the people we're trying.
All right. Um.
Yeah. It's a good, excuse me. This is Danny from wastewater again. The only thing I'd like to say is like, if you wanted to make it to where, you know, Freddie comes off the list and we get a RFP in place, whenever that happens, if you want to write that in, it's fine. My only issue was is that, you know, i- he's agreed to his rates and in an emergency situation. And, you know, we don't know when that's going to happen. So that's why I'm kind of like wanting to kind of keep him on the list until we get that RFP.
Oh, absolutely. Right. And that's why we're here tonight to keep that. And, and again, to be clear with the, uh, the RFP that I, we referenced already, they ended up selecting multiple contractors because there's different scenarios where you may get a better rate uh, from one contractor compared to another, depending on the size of the project, the depth of the project, the type of equipment needed to address that. So it adds additional flexibility, uh, to the, um, to the, uh, the, you know, the departments that are requesting those services. Okay. Um, uh, do we, I'm sorry, did, did we move that in second yet, Tristan?
Uh, we will now.
All right. I'll, I'll be Ray Dunbar, uh, Selectman Dunbar moved. I will, uh, second that. Any further discussion? Hearing on all favor, I, Selectman Cosgrove, aye.
Ray Dunbar, aye.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Everybody have a good night.
All right. And see you. Thanks, Brian.
Yeah. Thanks, Brian.
Item six, appointments, Clean Energy Ad-Hoc Committee, uh, point John Prince. I put that forward in a form of a motion.
I'll move it.
Move the second discussion hearing on all favor say aye. Uh, Jamie Cosgrove, aye.
Ray Dunbar, aye.
All right. Commission on Elderly Services, Alpha Caro, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. I put that form forward in form of a motion.
Ray Dunbar, second.
All right. It's moved the second discussion hearing on, uh, Jamie Cosgrove, aye.
Ray Dunbar, aye.
All right. Conservation Environment Commission, uh, Christie Day, term to expire July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. I put that forward in a form of a motion.
Ray Dunbar, second.
Move second. Uh, any discussion hearing on Jamie Cosgrove's, aye.
Ray Dunbar votes aye.
All right. Economic Development Commission, Elena Cahill, term to expire July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. I put that forward in a form of a motion.
Second.
It's been moved second discussion hearing now.
Question?
Yes. Go ahead.
Um, what is, uh, Ms. Cahill's background?
Um, she has a pretty extensive, we're, I think currently now she's working at the University of Bridgeport. I know she's involved in some business programs. Uh, she's had involved with, uh, uh, and some, um, uh, incentive programs, uh, centra- uh, energy conservation programs that are open to, uh, businesses as well. So, uh, I think they, um, should be an asset to it. Um, I know she's a proponent and has been, uh, looking even at some co-working space. She has some ideas, I think, for our town. So.
Well, just one quick comment and I'll let it go. But, uh, you know, it'd be nice to have somebody on economic development that actually has experience with development. And I don't think there's anybody, well, maybe, well, I can't think of anybody. And, um.
Can I add something, Jamie?
Sure.
I think Elena has extensive experience. She's a direct- director of the business school at the University of Bridgeport.
That's not what I'm saying, Cheryl.
Lawyer that worked on development and buying properties and real estate. Uh, and so she's got a lot of experience.
Well, that's, that was the nature of my question. And it didn't seem like the first selectman said that she had a lot of development experience. Said she had, you know, business experience, but that's a different. So I'll let, so.
I happen, Wayne, I happen to know her better because I recruited her to the Clean Energy Committee.
Well.
Have to know her background better. Jamie can't know the background of everybody.
Really, you're not my standard of reference on economic development. So, you know, let's just let it go.
Okay. All right. All right. So it's been moved second. Uh, Jamie Cosgrove, aye.
Ray Dunbar, aye.
Uh, item seven, reappointments, cable advisory, Margaret Hardenberg, term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. I put that forward in form of a motion.
Second.
Move second discussion. Uh, Jamie Cosgrove's, aye.
Ray Dunbar, aye.
Center revitalization review board, Phil Carloni, Trish Bohan-Riniger, Shiler Coulter, terms to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. We did these reappointments. Uh, they were approved at the previous meeting. However, uh, the term expiration should have been May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. We had, was, uh, misread at that meeting. So I'm putting those forward again.
I'll move it.
Move second. All right. Uh, any discussion? Uh, Jamie Cosgrove, aye.
Ray Dunbar, aye.
All right. Item eight, we have, under correspondence, we have a letter from project graduation to the board, uh, to the board, Branford Board of Selectmen. We are the project, project graduation committee for the Branford High School. Each year we hold a substance-free event, the night of graduation for seniors to have some fun and stay safe. We normally receive some funds from the BOA and the Branford Branford Community Foundation. As well as fundraising this year, year, there will be no cr- project grad- graduation event due to the pandemic. Our seniors are missing out on so many of their end of the school year activities and so many people in town want to contribute in some way to make it brighter for our seniors. Each year we fundraise by selling balloons for seniors. Family members can pay for balloons, which our committee and many volunteers deliver to seniors who receive them and tie them to their mailboxes. This year we received an overwhelming number of fourteen hundred balloon orders. The project graduation committee also committed to making sure each senior received at least two balloons, even if they had no orders. Therefore, we will be delivering to each and every BHS senior in town of Branford. All funds raised from the sales of the balloons will be given back to the seniors of twenty twenty. We also wanted to make the balloon delivery a little more fun for seniors. We will be delivering the balloons on school buses with cars and minivans in tow with the more balloon, balloons, playing music, displaying posters and delivering gift cards to seniors. We will put a procedure in place to observe all social distancing rules. We have an amazing number of volunteers from town who will participate in the blowing up and delivery of the balloons. We thought it would be more exciting for our seniors if we could add a fire vehicle to our little parade around town. So we have put in a request to the fire department and the fire tree approved it. The buses will be following their normal school bus routes for the most part. We will have four buses to deliver the balloons along twenty bus routes. This will take place on Friday, June twelfth. We call, and we have a call into the Branford Police Department to inform them if our plans, of their plans as well. We will be delivering to every single senior graduating from Branford High School this year who lives in the town of Branford. We will also have cars delivered to, cars delivered to any seniors who do not live in town. We will, we live in a wonderful supportive community and we are trying to do our little part in making this year a little more special for our seniors. We thought the Board of Selectmen would like to know of our plans and we hope that you approve as well. So this is from the committee. Um, I will read the names. Uh, Katina, uh, Gian Beris, Christine Bork, D I H Project Graduation Committee, Carla Donahue, Lauren Loomis, Kia Iyeng, Iyengut Nosi, Karen Erickson, Karen Akarula, Betsy Sacks, Ralph Capola, Kristen Esperity, Cheryl Anderson and Mindy Tabor. So I think that's a great idea. We know, uh, unfortunately with, uh, the pandemic, a lot of their activities have been canceled as well as town-wide, all town-wide acti- or town activities have been canceled. Uh, so I think to, uh, do saw a little something different than maybe typical has been done or expanding it beyond that has been done in the past to make it a little bit more special and, uh, for each of those se- seniors. So, uh, they have, you know, uh, uh, positive memories and, uh, for their graduation and as we deal with these, uh, challenging times. So I am supportive of, of this and I wish them all well.
And I like to second that. I did, uh, I did email back to them wishing them the best for it.
All right. Okay. Uh, with that, is there any other business?
Yeah, I have a couple of, uh, questions. I'll make it brief. One is, uh, Wayne Cook speaking. The, uh, issue I brought up last time to your board and also the, uh, Board of Finance regarding the surplus fund, actually the fund balance. And, uh, I brought it to the Board of Finance and the chairman was, you know, rather indignant that, uh, you know, he didn't really want to know much about it. He said he kind of tersely said he would take it under consideration, which I don't think he will. And I still think it's an idea that needs, uh, needs some, um, review and, uh, and careful, uh, study. I mean, I don't know, nor does anyone know what's going to happen with this, uh, pandemic. But, uh, it could get worse. Hope, you know, Lord knows, I hope it doesn't and it's sure we all do. But, you know, the, the town is sitting there, even with the maneuvers you made in terms of, uh, deferring not the, well, deferring payment and whatever, with at least ten million dollars extra than you really need and that fund balance. So I think you should take a hard look at that and see if there's some way you could, you know, put it out there for people that really need it. Maybe there's nobody that really needs it. I don't know. But it's, I think it's, uh, it's worth looking at, particularly in the fa- in light of the fact that we, uh, we have extra and we do have extra. I think, you know, that's, that's that. The other question I have, and I just trust you, you'll, I'll mention it, Board of Finance next time in the RTM two on next Wednesday. But a couple of questions to the first selectman, you know, there's a couple few petitions out there and I wanted to ask you specifically about one of them. The Tabor property, the seventy-seven acres that the town acquired, you know, through eminent domain, and then you know the history as well as I do. The Shoreline Greenway Trail, um, what permits did they have to build there?
Um, I believe that was, uh, uh, that went to, I know, at least a H twenty-four referral, uh, with the planning and zoning, but in terms of it's a, it's a town sidewalk, uh, and it's, it's owned by the town. So.
Well, yeah, but.
It wasn't permanent. It went through, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Did it go through the RTM?
The, uh, the, the funding, uh, for that project, I, I believe that was presented. Uh, it was state funds that paid for the project. I believe the, um, I know it came through before the Board of Selectmen. I'd have to go back and actually check the records.
Here's the thing. Here's the thing. This way I'm bringing nothing up. I'm not going to belabor it.
Actually, I'm sorry, Wayne. It did, it did go because I remember the discussion that took place in terms of if the, the trail itself, the way it had, because you had to have two termination points and the termination point in particular over by the, uh, Arc Road section. I remember, um, RTM member we asking if that would, um, impact any, uh, future use of the property. And the town engineer at the time had stated, uh, correctly that the town ultimately owns the, the trail. So i- if something had to be realigned in the future, um, that, that it, it would, you know, we would make accommodations. So yes, it did. I can get you those exact dates.
Yeah, I would like them. I'll, I'll contact, uh, Trista about that. I'd like to see exactly what was said and when it was said, because here's the point. I'll make this and then you can all, uh, adjourn, of course, that you have seventy-seven acres there that arguably cost the town, should not have cost the town, but it did cost the town twenty million dollars, give or take, and two hundred and sixty thousand dollars an acre. Well, it seems to me that that was supposed to go under some sort of master plan review. You know as well as I that thing came under fire when Public Works, you know, was proposed down there. And then it sat there for a while. And now it seems like this prime piece of real estate, seventy-seven acres, is being used primarily for hiking trails. And I guess there's a labyrinth down there. Now I have no problem with hiking trails and a labyrinth, but I think that seventy-seven acres requires and really demands more consideration than what this town is giving it. I mean, I know that, for example, well, let's just take J C Wyatt. She devised and she designed a really interesting nine-hole golf course. Well, maybe yes, maybe no, but that never really even got any consideration, nor did ball fields or other ideas down there. So, and you say, well, the Greenway Trail's off to the south, which I believe it is, and it doesn't. But now you got another trail that goes up to the pond, which is perpendicular to the, to the, uh, Greenway Trail. And that really cuts the property right in half. And I'm not sure where the labyrinth is and it's, you know, lovely labyrinth and, you know, good for them for building it. But is that your kind of unilateral vision down there? Is this going to become like a, a hiking area and just like little, yeah, you want to put it there? Sure. Go ahead, put it there. I mean, what's really, that's seventy-seven acres.
Yeah. Uh, I hear your point, but just to clarify, the, the Shoreline Greenway Trail is the same trail that you're referring to that really skirts, skirts the north or edge of the property that goes along that pond. Uh, so.
Okay. So it's northern, not the south.
Yes. Northern edge, you enter it, uh, along the, close to the tracks of Pine Orchard is one area. It pretty much runs that, that northern edge of the property to the trail. The, the point I was talking, as you get down closer to the, uh, Tabor end, it does dogleg south to get to a, a termination point because of the funding source required a, a small parking area to be built. Um, and the labyrinth is a- adjacent to this trail as well. So.
But again, you're filling up the seventy-seven acres. And I'm just wondering.
And it wasn't unilateral, just to, I know, I mean to cut you off, but those decisions, those decisions came before, uh, multiple bodies, uh, eh, for review and considerations.
Like who? Did it go before the RTM, which really has jurisdiction on this to see what?
Yeah. Like, as I said, I'll get you the dates.
No, but the labyrinth come?
The labyrinth, the, the, no, you're, the labyrinth did not, that's a, uh, uh, again, it's, I, I don't know if you had an opportunity to see it, walk down there, but it's, um, uh, you know, it's nothing that's going to be an impediment if needed. Uh, quite honestly, it's been, uh, well-received as an asset.
Nobody's saying.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but just to hear me out.
If, if we keep filling. If, if we keep filling that seventy-seven acres up with trails and perpendicular trails and labyrinths, and, you know, whatever, well, then we're not going to have seventy-seven acres at our disposal at one point. And I guess that really needs to be addressed, because you know as well as I know, Tristan, first selectman, that there was always, always a, uh, 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 an idea, at least, and I think it was more than an idea, to have a master plan performed. I mean, you know, town's got a seventy-seven acre, twenty million dollar asset, probably worth about half that, maybe, maybe not even that much. And we don't even know what we're going to do with it. So like, okay, well, put up a labyrinth, that's fine with us. Well, maybe not. I think it's got to be looked at, and it's got to be looked at very seriously. And I will call your, um, executive assistant tomorrow, or email her, and ask if she could, uh, provide me with the documentation for those, particularly the RTM approvals.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, um, I just want to take, uh, a minute, um, to, as you know, Selectman Higgins has not been able to join us, uh, in a while. And, uh, you know, it's sad to say, he's really in a fight right now. And I just want to say, Joe is, his wisdom and his experience has been a benefit to this town, to me personally, this administration. He's a man who has committed his entire life to public service. And I think it's time that I just ask everybody now for us as a community to keep him and his family in our prayers and our thoughts. Thank you.
Can I say one thing, first selectman? One thing you and I will agree on, and that's that Joe Higgins is a real American hero. And, um, well, you know, your, your remarks were very well stated.
Thank you, Jamie, that was really nice.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourned.
Being adjourned.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.